License approval, approval of a change of agent for Regina Nowinski for a Class A liquor license held by GPM Southeast LLC DBA Jets located on Janesville Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. That passes. Communications and miscellaneous businesses authorized by law. Any updates from any of the liaisons? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. We're adjourned at 6:17. I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole, for July 22nd, 2025 at 6:17 PM. Tenants rule call.
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Schrader is absent. Dugie.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, July 18th, 2025.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from the committee, a whole from June 24th, 2025?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. New business, present, presentation on the road program. So Scott and Ryan are going to come up and kind of talk about the status of our roads, what other communities are doing. We can talk about some options. I'm going to talk lightly as far as what financial impact might be on some of this. We will be, depending on how this conversation goes, I can, I'm planning on having Baird to come in at some point and talk about the cost of borrowing. But I do have some numbers that I can give you today, depending on what numbers you're looking at and how that would impact the tax bills.
Okay, so for the people that, I gave this talk with Ryan, I think we did it twice in 2024. I think the last time was in December of 2024. So I'm going to kind of give you a big picture and kind of see where we are. What you're seeing in front of you, this map, so every two years by state law, we have to go out and Ryan and I have to go rate our roads. We use the Pazer rating system. If you go online and look at our roads, you can see every road that we have, the Excel spreadsheet's there, the spreadsheet's there. You can go and check out any road, the year it was built, when it was done last, everything. So.
What, explain the Pazer, the phaser system.
So it's a visual, it's a visual thing. They give you this booklet and they tell you that you drive around, Ryan and I look, and we break it down from like intersection to intersection. So you could have Martin Road, but every intersection, we can give it a different rating. Because some sections of maybe the road are. No, no, no. We have to follow what the state says, Pazer rating system. This is what, yeah. Now, do we use the GS as tools to create a lot of the stuff? We use it as tools. We keep information, all the mapping and everything, but we have to use, we have to follow the Pazer rating system for rating roads.
I mean, I think what you're getting at is do we use like drones to go and like film all this stuff?
Yes, we do. We do do that.
But they, they do have to visually inspect each of the roads.
Yeah.
And usually the quickest way is to drive it.
We use a combination. Here's a perfect example. Let's say that we were having some person going to use our road for a haul route. We'll take the drone all the way across, map it. If we have ever conflicts of like, oh, we did damage, here's all the drone photos. Stuff like that. That's what we use the drones for. Every year, we have to go through and we have to just add roads, take roads away. So right now, we are sitting and to think about.
Before we get too far, I wanted to, I don't want to, there's people watching and we always talk about the phaser ratings to the public, so I just want to make sure they're on board. Can you tell me what, it goes from a zero.
Zero to a 10.
To a 10. And which is good and which is bad?
Okay. Zero, not so good. That is really bad. 10, good. That's like you built a brand new road. Hill and Dale Road that we just built, that's a 10. We do a road program right away, it's a 10. Nine and 10s are like the good ones. So.
All right, sorry. I'm done beating up on what phasers are.
No, okay. So that's, that's what it is. So this is right here, color wise, represents what we did two years ago in 2023. Okay? So greens, good. Yellow is five. And then we're, we did red, orange, that's where it's hot. Hot areas are ones that we are running out of. Where it's fours, threes. It's just bad. And we are getting a lot more red and oranges. Okay? And why this is important is Ryan and I have to go out in the fall and we have to go rate all our roads again. Okay? And if you look, this first one, this graph that I presented to you, right now, ratings one to four, we have 65, approximately 65 miles are one to fours. We have 87, five to 10s. Okay? This map, you'll see a couple that'll go green when we rate 25s because we had the road program in 24 and we have the road in 25. However, what I think you're going to see after Ryan and I rate this, we are probably going to be really close of 50, 50% or getting closer of one to fours and five to 10s. So that means we are losing that battle where you are just seeing more and more going to ones to fours. And we're going to get, half our roads are at ones to fours. And as we talked about this, this last couple of years, we, Ryan sees the road, his guy sees the roads. I bet you, number one complaint from everyone has been roads. I bet you guys get pictures, Alderman Wolf had, Alderman Dugie, like actual pictures of us. And we are, we are just not keeping up with doing it. We are now kind of in a defensive position where we have crack ceiling and we have maintenance. We are hitting sevens and eights. What we do is, is like most communities, is we find a road that's seven or eight, if we see a crack, we are hitting that, those areas, crack ceiling, and we are trying to keep that line of anything from seven to 10 higher up and just don't let it fall to six. And don't let it fall to five. Okay? That's, that's kind of our, our game plan, and that's a lot of game plan from a lot of municipalities. We are trying not to have them slip, the ones that we just did. Okay? And we are just, we get, we just cannot keep up with what they're doing. And again, I've done this talk three times, it is the biggest thing. So as we start going, and you look at the next one is our spreadsheet. That spreadsheet just got updated. Everything except for yellow is brand new of 2025. Okay? These are the budgets that we have with the miles, population that we are doing. The one thing that I want to say that's kind of interesting is, on the way bottom, where we have the cycle, it says cycle, world life cycle is 152 miles divided by 2.14 miles that we did, we're about 71 years for every road, for replacing a road. Okay? When I gave my talk two years ago, we were at 67. So we're jumping, guys. I mean, as inflation hits, as these roads are worse, we are doing less roads. As we do less roads and we get into harder roads, our budget is just not going any further. Okay? We are just, we are just not keeping up. And when you have a road center, we're not even talking about it. If you go down by Champions, okay, we have the mile, it's a center line of the road. I have no idea why, they have like three lanes in there. I mean, we will be stuck in that subdivision forever. We'll just be stuck. So as you can see from the spreadsheet, we only do $750,000 that are operating and we ask for an extra million. I'm asking an extra million. Our capital is just what we are. But even that extra million is every three years, it's still not keeping up with what we have. So the next slide, or next picture, where I want to kind of like really hone in.
It's a call, so you guys feel, if you guys want to walk up there and stand, this is an informal meeting, so if you guys want to just go stand in front of it, that's fine.
So all this right now is just showing fives, fours, threes, and whatever. So this is the question that everyone asks. When is my road getting done? So I want to show it to you right now for the next five years, if we just keep spending 750, see these areas right here? There's one here, there's one here, one here, one here, one here, one here, one here. That's it. Those are the areas for the next five years.
At the 750.
At the 750. We don't know about the 1 million until you give me it. You know, I only come. Well, it doesn't factor. Okay? I just want, I'm trying to be honest. Okay? But this is it. These are the only areas. So when people call and say, Landon, are you coming to do Landon? It's not even in the five-year plan. It's, it's just, it's not there.
So on a $750,000 that we spent this year, right, did we have the extra million?
No.
Last year, like, $750,000, did that include Hill and Dale?
No.
No, 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 no. That did not include anything with Hill and Dale.
Hill and Dale had nothing to do with the road program.
This is just road program. Now, does that road program, because we did it, become a five? Exactly right. It will, or a 10. It will become a 10. But that is a separate item. What some.
There was no funding from the road program done on Hill and Dale.
Right, I understand that. But are we including everything that we're doing that's not in the road program that gets done? Or is that more of an exception on Hill and Dale in other years?
But we do, like, our major capital projects has been only Hill and Dale and Moreland and.
Kipling was the road program.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of the road program. And Bay Lane.
Both sides of, both sides of Hill and Dale were outside of the road program.
It was a capital project.
Separate capital projects.
Correct. No, does that.
I was going to say, but so we are spending more money than the 750.
Correct. But I can tell you something, though. Some municipalities, they do a capital project every year. We do not do a capital project every year.
Did you bring it up? I see Franklin is probably the closest to us in Miles and People.
Yeah.
And they're doing 2.2 million a year, but it says only one capital project a year. So.
That's the 2.2 is just the road program. And then, and then they do another capital project anywhere between four to five million.
Okay.
Okay? And now, yeah, so that's just to let you know, some of these communities are doing, besides a road program, they're doing an extra capital program, a capital project every year. Okay? We just, I'll be honest, we just don't have that many capital projects. But our road program, like you said Franklin, it's 2.2. We're not, we're not even half that. We're at. Correct.
I was trying to look for something that's similar in area to us. I will probably think some of the roads are newer that are probably over.
I think us and Franklin have developed at about the same rate over the last 15, 20 years. I mean, as far as the amount of new subdivisions and existing ones, so it's probably pretty close to look at.
Yeah. And guys, like speaking, you said business. Our industrial park, the business park, I don't know, last time you've driven through there, but if you want to take a ride, and that one will cost us so much money because we can't just replace that a little bit, you got to think a little bit of extending and putting like more shoulders that are thicker. If you watch any truck that tries to go in and out, they are tearing up the shoulders of every one of those roads in there. And when we do that, that is going to cost even more money when you do that, that industrial park. And the thing is this, if we don't do it, businesses are going to be like, why am I here if it's causing damage to my vehicles or I can't get in and out of doing it? But that one is going to cost way more for. All orange, orange and red. And I'm guessing, orange and red, so you're at fours, threes. Yeah. And I can tell you, if you drive it, I'm guessing a lot of those fours are threes for next. I'm not giving you, we had two years where I feel like this winter, it's, it's kind of like, get cold, get warm, get cold, get warm, back and forth. That's not real good for our roads.
Like, it smells not good either.
Yeah. And it's, and it's really taken our roads a beating. Yeah. Yeah. So this is where we, we are at. And again, we brought this up last time about borrowing and, but we got to do something. We, we, and we can't just be throwing 750. If you throw like an extra 50,000, guys, that's like a cul-de-sac. That's, that's nothing at it. And we, you got to at least try to do something. And the fact is, I hate to say it, is you, we ain't going to do a wheel tax. We probably, we can't create a transportation utility. So your options are pretty much borrowing money. And we talked about that last time.
So when we get in, when we talked about how are we going to fund this, right now, we're doing it under operating, except for every third year, we, we do that one boost. There is no option right now to do it under operating because of the state levy caps. If you're going to do anything under operating, you're going to be laying off essential people. I mean, we, we don't have extra fat in this community. I mean, right now, you guys have done a good job. We've all done a good job over the last 20 years of making sure we get the most bang for our buck. There, I can't think of somewhere where I could point to and say, oh, there's, they got two or three extra positions there. And even if we did that, two or three extra positions is going to get you $300,000, which is not a lot of road. So what we're, what we, what most communities do is they have a capital improvement plan where they borrow, they, they have a setup borrowing, like two or three, say like two, three, and four million, whatever number they come up with, every other year. And then it would be set up in such a way, and this is where I'll have Baird come in and explain how this works. It's, when you have it set where you do it every other year, it doesn't take that bad of a hit on the average taxpayer. So just rough numbers here, these aren't the ones they're going to get exactly, but these are going to be rough numbers. If we were to borrow, say, $4 million for roads this year, on the average home in Meskego, which is $500,000, it's going to be between 45 and 60 on their tax bill. So, and. For, in this case, would be a 20-year bond, for 20 years. Yeah. So now, if you do a capital improvement plan, what you're essentially doing is building that in, so that would be continuous because as they roll off. But it's a one-time hit. It doesn't keep on going up as you borrow more and more because they structure the borrowing so it all, where, where, where stuff is falling off, it's getting backfilled in with new debt and it keeps everything level. So that you don't get those ups and downs in your tax rate. But that's, so, okay, so that was $4 million, $5 million would be between 55 to 70 on the average tax bill. I don't like raising taxes by any means. However, we're one of the few communities in the state of Wisconsin that doesn't borrow money to keep up their roads or infrastructure at all. We are fortunate that we have landfill. We get roughly $2 million a year on that. I can tell you this year's capital requests this year are, if we take roads out of it, are about $2 million, maybe 2.5 million. That's, that's without looking at roads. So, you know, you can look at, and there's, there's a couple of things in there that you may be able to put off, but, you know, one of the things you're going to look at on there and say, oh, there's a splash pad on there, let's give it to that. Well, the money the splash pad is using from the landfill has to be used for parks. You can't use it on roads. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things. There, there's some things that you might be able to wiggle and get a year out of and wait on that, but pretty much the landfill money is going to be probably used for the non-capital improvement stuff, like equipment and, you know, fire trucks and things like that that we've, that we fund, new vests for our police department and guns and ammunition, all that stuff. I, I think we really need to look at how we're funding our roads and it, it was good to be able to pay as you go, but I don't think we're, we're in that luxury anymore. The other part of it is, when we get to the actual operating cost of our budget this year, right now, I'm starting at about, at least a $2 million deficit, so we got to come up with $2 million in cuts. If we shift, if we shift over this to a capital, that does free up some money to at least maintain what we have. We're not here talking about adding any positions. And I know the chief's asking for three positions.
So you're saying, shift the 750 over?
750.
Plus whatever we, if.
No, shifting the 750, replacing it with whatever we do every other year borrowing to, to do our roads. Now, the argument, there's another argument on this, and I've explained this to a couple of you over, over the years, is road lasts 20 years. Say we had the money and we paid for it this year. The people that are here right now pay for it. You may retire, move out tomorrow, go somewhere else, and your next community decides they need roads, and now you're paying for it. You're not enjoying the road for 20 years. When you borrow it, when you borrow for the lifetime of the thing you're financing, the people that are using it are paying for it. Yes, you're paying for interest, but the, right now, and interest rates aren't as low as they used to be, but it's 4%. 4% is pretty darn low. I mean, we're, because we, we have a AA1, which is the second highest bond rating, which gives us the second lowest, second, you know, the, almost the highest or the cheapest bond rate you can get. It's a tool that is out there that governments should be taking more advantage of. Our overall debt, like I said, is a good thing. We're only using like 13% of our actual authorized capacity for debt. Most communities in Waukesha County are more in the 30s and 40%. So. What? You can if the rates go down, yes. There's certain things called call dates. So you have windows in those bonds where you can refinance. And even if you're not at one of those windows, what they do is they refinance and then they take part of that money and they kind of use it to pay the old ones until that window opens up. So that's, that's, that's a short explanation is, we, we need to fix our roads. It's a matter of, I think, tolerance for how much you are comfortable with on raising taxes, because it's going to be a raising taxes thing. And those are, and, you know, how much you put into it. I think at this point, my, my recommendation is we have Baird come in and explain the financing part of it and the different options, answer all your questions on that. And then we, at the same time, we're going to be doing this all as we go into the budget. The budget's really starting next meeting and going forward until we pass it in late October. But, you know, I think we, we need to have these conversations. And we're going to be getting a lot more input from you from the get-go on this one because this is going to be a difficult budget year. Now, last year, you know, the budget process was fairly adversarial, I would say, because we were using some one-time funding sources. I can tell you that we're not going to use any of those one-time funding sources because, as I told you last year, we, I, I knew, they were placeholders, budgets are a guess. I was confident by the end of the year that we would be able to save money in other areas and not be able to use those. I'm still confident we're going to end up there, even though we're, I mean, something could change in the next six months, but I'm pretty confident right now we're going to be fine. But next year is a whole different year. We have health insurance. Hopefully, we can find a way to do self-insurance and keep it at a 0% increase. If we can't, I mean, we're looking at, you know, minimum probably of 25% health insurance, and that's our single, besides MMSD, it's the single biggest check we write every, every year. That's, you know, right now, I think we're paying 2.2 million in health insurance. Well, add 25% onto that, that's five or six positions out there. And we don't have people, we don't have unneeded positions that we can even get through on attrition. If we had people retiring, anything we, we like, we, we make reductions on, we will be getting phone calls on from the citizens because it's integral to our system.
I think Jenny shared, like, you know, they passed a new state budget. I think our, whether our transportation aids would go up $45,000 or something. It was pretty small.
So the, there, there is an increase on our shared revenue from the state. It's tied to sales tax. Next year, it will go up about $35,000. That's the shared revenue. The state budget, I don't have the impact on it. They did stick a lot of extra money in there for infrastructure, for roads and things like that. I caution on how that will impact Meskego because a lot of times it's tied to demographics and we're too rich, both from our property value. Our property value right now is sitting around $5 billion. We're one of the wealthiest communities in the state when it comes to actual property value. And then income level, we're hovering, I think, around 121,000 per, per household for a family, which is, again, one of the highest. We're, we're rivaling So when they do give aid for transportation and stuff like that, it usually it's doled out from a regional level and almost all the money goes to Milwaukee County.
Other question?
Yes.
What is the process if we were to decide we wanted to go?
What is the process if we decided we wanted to go forward with whatever, it's 3 million, 4 million, or 5 million, whatever it is? And what say does the, does that go to referendum?
No.
Does the community have any say in that? Or it's just?
That's, our, our policy or our ordinance states anything under $10 million, you guys make a decision on. I wouldn't recommend ever going to referendum on something that's small because it is relatively small. And I, I just think it's, it's bad government. I think you definitely have conversations with your constituents and, and, you know, be out there, you know, go to things like Thursday night and start talking about this. I talk about the, the woes of where we are from a budget standpoint because of the levy caps. I mean, here's, here's one of the ridiculous parts of it. So levy caps are tied to the amount of money that we can spend over our, tied to how much net new construction you get in the community. Typically, it's been under 1%. Now, last year was a record year for us for a long time. We got 1.8%. Well, costs are going up like three to, well, the last five years, anywhere from 3 to 8%. So what we're getting, we're going backwards every year on it. Now, even if we, if we would have just gotten, they used to have a floor of two, you used to get net new construction or 2%. If we'd have gotten that 2% all along, we'd be fine. Because the 2% every year would have kept us above water and we'd be fine going forward. But we haven't gotten that. We've gotten much less than that. And, you know, you, at the end of the day, you got to pay, you get, things cost money. And I don't think we have a lot of waste here. Now, can you go through the budget and find some stuff? Sure. You know, you could look at things like no more conferences for everyone and you'd save about maybe $10,000. Well, that's not getting us anywhere except having people that aren't up on the newest thing to do their jobs better. You know, a lot of, so there, there are things like that you could cut out, but there, there's, there's no big, there's one big ticket item that we'll be talking about at next meeting, but I'm not going, that's going to be a closed session, but that's it.
One more question. I think you had mentioned in the past possibly of looking into like a public safety referendum, which I thought you were considering including roads in that with more police officers or fire and rescue.
That is my recommendation. And I think as we go through this process, I think we need to talk about that seriously. We need more police. Fire, depending what, regardless of what we do with fire, we have to fund rescue more than we are. So that may be just, and I'm not undertoning, just giving them more money. It may be just giving them more money, a couple hundred thousand. It may be going to a full-blown municipal department. It could be a hybrid of that, that costs money. And if I did that, if I were to recommend a referendum, I would do a public safety referendum, which would include police, fire, and public works because what Ryan does is public safety. We have a lot more, our number of roads grow every year and we're plowing them and maintaining them with the same amount of people, even though we're getting more, more miles of road every year. And we need to, we need, just like we need more police officers to patrol, Ryan needs more guys on patrol to do his, his department. So yes, I think a public safety referendum next April would be, would be, at least from my standpoint, advisable. As a politician, somebody who's going to be on the ballot next April, it's probably the worst thing for me to do that, but I think it's, it's the right thing to do. And I would, I would be, I would put my name out in front of that.
So what, what is Baird's role? Have they been involved with us before?
Yes, Baird, Baird is our, our financial advisor. So we've been, we've been with them since 2020. They, anytime we've done a borrowing, like, we did a refinance of some debt a number of years ago, because like you said, the rate went down. I think we're at like 1% or 1 and 1/4.
That was a good deal for us.
So what they'll do is structure how the debt would go out, put it to market, and they, we would, there's two types of ways. You can do a competitive, a competitive selling of the bonds, or you can do an auction, and they would explain the pros and cons and all that.
I just wanted to make, I didn't know that we use them for, for road projects. We haven't used them for.
Any borrowing.
Just any borrowing?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then we'll just use 4 million as a number. You were talking not, you're talking that for a couple of years?
Well, there's one.
Of roads. I mean, you're not talking about 4 million and doing all those roads in one year?
You're not going to take care of your road program with two $4 million borrowings. We've got 70 years worth of, you know, catch-up to do on there. I think we need to hit, put a borrowing plan out there into the future, and they would be able to show you how that structure would impact the tax bill.
So like, like what I'm saying, if we're, I'm just using an example, 4 million, let's say that's for two or three years and then we'll go back and do it again. Is that?
It would be, it would be, yeah. It would be every, typically what communities do is every other, every three-year borrowing, where they do their capital improve, it's called a CIP, which is a capital improvement program.
And just so I understand again, the 750 would be sucked into that 4 million. It would be 4.7 million.
Well, it'd be 4 million. It just, the, the new part of it would be 3, you know, 3.25.
Right, okay. Just so, okay, just so I'm clear on that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Of the 750,000 now, is that used just for road repair? Or is there any roads that are actually constructed brand new?
Well, we, okay. They're not like a hill and hill road where we take it all the way down the subbase. We are basically trying to do either a mill, put two inches down, maybe we're stripping all the pavement out. But these projects are supposed to be, get in and out within a week. But these projects are supposed to be get in and out within a week or two. They're more of a Band-Aid rather than, hey, you're going to put all new new base in there unless we find some like subgrade that's kind of weak and it doesn't pass a proof roll. So in the the case, these are more of not doing a full world reconstruction, but using the tools to do a maintenance plan for the road. Okay?
So this is, this is basically, the seven fifty K is basically for road repair?
Road repair. And and we have extra money like about sixty, seventy thousand?
I have a separate operating budget. It's called Road Oils and Asphalt to where I wouldn't like, if we replace a culvert, we have to repave where we replaced the culvert. I have bring the crack fill guys in once a year. Depending on where my budget's at, I'll dedicate like forty, fifty, sixty thousand and like last year I did Pioneer. So Pioneer is probably a seven, it's going to stay a seven for years. To all around Lake Brittany, Alderman Wolf, that was all done in sixteen and seventeen, that got cracked sealed. Those are going to stay at sevens and eights. Last year, when we were doing budget cuts out of my operating budget in that one account, to save money on the operating budget, we removed seventy-five thousand out of that. So I came into this year with twenty-five thousand to do seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Example, Alderman Dalgie knows North Shore Drive, which is slated to be repaved totally in twenty-six, got to a part of where I couldn't even plow it this upcoming winter. It wasn't safe anymore, so I had to take ten thousand dollars. My guys did the work and I'm going to rip it all up next year, but that's just to get us through another year and make it passable and safe. Alderman Wolf, we did Somerset Drive from Longfellow to Franklin Line. That was twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So I have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget. I'm capped already and it's July.
And it and then the the crack and fill.
They're not coming this year.
You can only do that so.
They're not coming this year unless we can make something work with our road program, depending on how that goes, but.
Because most of the roads you can't do that with the cracks have already been done and they're too wide now.
Yeah, and with, when I get to these threes and fours and the fives that are going to turn to fours and maybe some threes or fours turn into threes. To answer your question, Alderman Decker, we're to the point now where I'm burning through my operating budget just to limp us along so we can plow the roads. Daisy Drive in Alderman Hamels District from Martin to Vine Street. The cross cracks are so bad from us plowing and Amazon trucks who shake in houses. So I had to go in there and burn up money and they asked when I was coming back and I said, you guys aren't even in the ten year. So it's it's getting to the point to where we're not even treading water anymore. We're just drowning to where I have to send guys out to patch and you'll see when we ask for certain tools and equipment, come up capital. And we'll talk about more when we do operating budget to where we're we're just just getting by. And now it's a point of where I had to address North Shore Drive and next year I want to rip it all up and repave it. It'll be brand new. But unfortunately, I could have took that ten thousand dollars and focused on pick something red just to get us along.
So a couple of things that I just want to touch on now that he brought he brought it up. One, he mentioned Amazon trucks. That is really having an impact on our roads. Those, for one, they're electric. Those trucks weigh around twelve thousand pounds. And they're, you know, how often do? No, I think it's once they're loaded. Yeah, they're they're right around there, but they're not light. They're not like, you know, electric trucks are, you know, twenty-five percent heavier than, you know, a conventional vehicle. So that's one part of it that are is having a big impact. Plus, you know, the the more affluent the community, the more people that have cars, you know? Instead of the kid borrowing mom and dad's car, they all have a car now. So that's, we're just getting a lot more use out of our our roads and, you know, they they only last so long. I just want to clarify for those watching at home that don't, or just trying to get an education, or Alderman Decker had asked about, you know, is that money just for repairs? New roads, like new subdivisions going in, the city does not put pay for those roads. I know most of you all understand that, but those watching at home may not. When a new subdivision goes in, there's a developer that buys the land, pays for all the infrastructure and then turns that infrastructure over to the city. So that's being paid for by, you know, a private developer, which actually is why for a number of years, we got away with what we did on our road program because a lot of our subdivisions were new. Look how many subdivisions are now twenty years old. Well, roads last around twenty years. And now we have to, once they're turned over to us, it's our responsibility to repair them or replace them. So that's another part of it is you look at, you know, some communities like Sussex right now that are going gangbusters with new construction. I don't know why their button or number is so high on here, but there's the road, I mean, they have all these new things. Twenty years from now, their budget that they figured out, unless they keep on adjusting for it, is going to, they're going to take a big hit all at once because everything's growing out there at once.
You you can think just, you just approved a dedication for twin silos. You do, you just approved, we took that road over. You just approved it tonight that we own that road, we own that sanitary system, we own that storm system. You guys just approved that cul-de-sac off of Test Corners Drive that is now ours. That is another road that he has to plow. When Kirkland Crossing comes in, that is going to be another road. Last year, we took Mallard. Another one, Basler is court is coming. We, as we grow, that's one thing, and we get residential. The the one side effect is we take over all those public roads and those utilities. That is our responsibility. That's just a fact of life.
Well, the good thing about that is the roads are new and the taxpayers are new. So the money hopefully should be spread around the way it should be. But depending on the quality of road that's put in is the question. So hopefully our guidelines.
It it could be guidelines, but I can tell you.
The infrastructure.
Well, well, it's weird about roads. We have a subdivision that was made with when they put shingles in the asphalt. It is one of the, I do not know why, but you know, when they started, and again, that's, you know, here, we're going to do this. And that set of, that subdivision is failing like no tomorrow. Again, new methods, new means, they work, we, they don't work. Again, we're kind of follow their rules. This is what we are, we have to put down for the pavement. You know what I mean?
Our standards are high, though. I mean, and we hear it from developers all the time because what we require of them is different than what other communities do. And I mean, to the point where they're threatening to take us to court on like, go for it, you know, it's, these are our standards.
You want to build, make some money.
Go build somewhere else.
Yeah, well, the question is, is the roads that they're that they're putting in, I mean, I look at it like a cell phone. You know, I don't want to buy the next cell phone that comes out right away. I don't want to do the update right away. So we shouldn't take the new asphalt right away. We should, you know.
Oh, you mean the new, the new technology?
Right.
We don't, we're not early adopters on that.
No, no, we don't, we don't do any of that. It it's just, again, you know, this was just what it was twenty, and we can kind of see it. But the best roads that, again, I'll talk about them is like, I believe, like Parker and around the lake, where we land in even the new Hill and Hill, we did it in one pass, no scene. And that, I I am not kidding you, it is, there's no water that gets in those roads and those that we can do in one pass. And even with Hill and Hill, we worked it out. Could we do this in one pass? And they put some kind of like wings on it just to get it. And that is a game changer. I think North Shore, we can probably do that one due to the narrowness. If we can do it in one pass, those roads tend to last a very, very long time. Yeah, so.
I guess my question is, if you could put a list together, I'd like to see the seven next roads that you think should be done with borrowed money.
Well, how about we do this? How about, I mean, how much work would it be if we said, okay, if we gave you three, four or five million dollars, what could you get? I mean, I I know it goes out the bid and it changes from year to year, but can you get?
We can get that. We can get that real quick. We have a rough idea.
Or give, yeah, give me the seven worst roads you have that.
Well, that's, yeah, we we can do this.
That are costly, not not little passes, bigger passes, right?
Yeah, and we've done this, and what we've done is, you know, for our last scenario, remember I provided you spreadsheets of what if we spend fifty million, forty million, thirty million? So if you say that you give, just tell me the number and I can give you a spreadsheet, okay. All right, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Even without a number, I like to just see the seven worst roads you think should be done next.
Okay.
And then, and then, and then.
Alderman Decker?
This seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is this a capital budget item?
Right, no, no, the seven fifty right now is under operating. My, my discussion I've had with you guys is if we're going to switch this to, I I would switch this to a capital project and take it out of operating because we have operating issues as well. At least until we get through a referendum.
And the other question I got is, is like you said, you're working on the sevens and eights, keeping them going. And and part of our problem over the years is we went too far that we can't resurface these, right? Some of these roads, and that's the costly part?
As they get worse, the threes and fours.
You can't resurface them?
Uh, we're at that point where they're.
You have to tear out?
Yeah, yeah, we had to tear out the asphalt.
You're talking about the curb and gutter areas that we used to do a two-inch mill in Overly in the past?
Well, I, most, most areas don't have curb and gutter, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, I would say we're not fifty fifty, but we still have a lot of open ditch areas. But in the past, we get through, and I guess a road that comes to the top of my head right now is Scenic Drive. Scenic Drive is off of Joel, off of Lanin, or off of Haven, I should say. Scenic Drive is beyond repair right now.
That's not a curb and gutter, is it?
It is.
Oh, it is, okay.
Unfortunately, it's going to have to wait another two years during an odd year, which is an L rip year where we get some reimbursement for it for curb and gutter.
So you have to rip out the curb and gutter as well?
No, curb stays. We rip out portions that aren't go, like functional. But the last two-inch mill in Overly would have been the Lake Meadows subdivision down off of Kelsey. We were able to get in there and do a majil, a majority of just two inches down. The remaining asphalt's good. We slid over the top and we were able to do a whole subdivision in one year. The remaining curb and gutter subdivisions we have right now are beyond that. If we would go over the top of it with the two inches, you get into the bottom layer and it starts to fail proof rolls and which we call scavving, it scabs up and that reflects through in two years. And I'm back down there taking out of our operating budget and seal coating everything and crack filling. So it's, it's this constant back and forth. And it it's also would be nice to know just for us, for planning wise, whatever the dollar amount is, that we can structure what we do ahead of time. Because my staff goes out in the different infrastructure, cross culverts, ditching. We kind of coordinate that so we know we're coming in a certain area and we can plan for that. With our current budget, I know I'm coming in there, but there's people that have gotten letters three years in a row just because we fell short. And then there's one of you guys coming back and I have no answer to tell them.
Well, unfortunately, it's the mayor's proposal. So we can't give you anything because right now you have zero dollars approved debt.
Well, I'm not asking for anything right now. I'm just asking.
But you say you'd like to know in advance.
A little bit, a little bit farther than the last four years we talked about it.
Alderman Decker?
How many, how many miles could we realistically tackle in a year?
Uh, two, right now, we're at two miles with our current budget and that's.
Well, I think his question is if you had unlimited funding, what would be the most?
I would more or less put a dollar amount on that. I'd probably go like four to four million project weight.
We we talked to contractors and we've been asking them, you know, could you handle four to five million? And they're like, yep, every person says that they they could handle four to five million.
How many miles of road does that buy us?
We don't know.
Well, it, but the more you, but also the more you spend with one contractor, the more roads you're going to get because their price per mile is going to drop.
Their equipments here.
Their mobilization costs and everything else, plus they're going to want the bigger job. Where they can just, they can just sit in one community all summer instead of doing, you know, four different communities.
Hopefully, oil problems.
They're going to be a lot better. So you really can't put a per mile thing on it.
Well, I definitely think.
But you know how much it costs right now per mile roughly, right?
Yeah, it it would, we'd, I would say if we spend more money, we're going to, well, one, you're just going to get a better rate for miles per money spent just because of the fact, as you did do larger amounts, the price goes down. Check with contractors, if we do four to five million dollars in our budget, could you handle it? The the contractors that bid on it said, yes, we will definitely bid on your projects. It's not too much for us to handle. So.
Well, I think that before we talk money on the roads, we should talk about air conditioning.
Um, I I I already put a call into him this morning and explained because that last night that was really loud.
Yeah.
It was, it was pretty loud.
Yes, last year, I remember there was a figure thrown out by by somebody, I think might it might have been you, Ryan, of a of a dollar cost per foot. Do we have a, do we have a sense of what that would be?
Yeah, and that was maybe like two years ago, but I, if I find it, I can email it to you or email it to everyone.
Changes so drastically depending on what the scope of the project.
Yeah.
Well, just an estimate I think we had out there and and it's probably pretty close right now because prices of oil were higher than than the.
Well, you you can't just look at the cost material. You have to look at the work being done. So a perfect example where I came from right before here was we were doing a proof roll on the other end of town. I had areas that failed, so now we're undercutting the whole road two feet down. We have a unit cost for stone, unit cost for removal, unit cost for putting the stone back in. So that seven fifty, you know, we have base bit and alternate bits. We rarely get into alternates. That seven fifty is burned up pretty fast. So it's a lot of factors that go in. And that's why, as the mayor said before, like with developers, um, I treat each development like I would our roads because I know we're taking over. So like when we do a proof roll, they're not really excited to see me because I'm the guy that says, nope, not good enough, do it again. So that's, we take that approach with everything and we keep that standard high. But that's why our our higher standards are why we have the decent stuff. We have now even good stuff to keep moving forward.
Questions, comments?
Also too, you're not the only community, this is like, when we go to meetings.
This conversation is one that's going across this whole state.
This is one of the like, I do a public works forum, number one topic right there. You know, number two is then maybe like PFOS because it got popular, but number one, I mean, let's be honest, this is your number one complaint from all you guys. And when you reach out to me, this is it. I mean, right? I mean, I mean consistently.
This past budget, like I said, there is more money in there for roads and infrastructure and there's a possibility that we can get some of this. I just, it's, in the past, it's been hard. We're not going to not try to do that. I just want to be clear on that. So the the league was very happy with what they got out of the state budget for roads for communities. We'll just see how how much in reach it is of Meskego and if it is, we're definitely going to grab as much as we can. But knowing from the past, I'm just trying to brace you for the worst.
Well, I do have one more comment to make. We do have a nice trail system. And we don't have a maintenance program, do we?
Our maintenance program is when someone calls up and if we walk it, if we see an issue, then we kind of use our funds.
Manage by complaint, okay?
Yeah.
But you're not, you're not reading the systems like you're doing with the roads and and these trails.
We 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 kind of drive it and and see, again, a little less sophisticated than a road. But again, we go through and we kind of see.
I mean, the life will be longer. It's just going to be more cracks and stuff.
There's, there's less load on them, hopefully. But again, do we have to do maintenance on them? Yep, we have to cut, you know, and but the cost is also too is this, they're not as wide. There's only what, three inches of asphalt that's on it. It's not six. And and if it sinks a little bit, it's not going to sink by a human being or or car, so we don't usually undercut it. But we look for for things. We do maintenance on the trails or a sidewalk. If we see a sidewalk that it popped up, we got to go and we got to go fix it.
But those are things we can do in-house, too.
Yeah, yeah, and we.
But but the question is just like the roads, when the water gets in there, that's when it starts happening, right?
Right.
And I can see just driving down the roads, all the grass growing and weeds and stuff in between them. So I always said that from the beginning, we put these trails in that we're going to put all this money and we're going to spend all this money on trails and we have no maintenance program. And nobody wanted to put one together and that was before your time. That's something that we're going to have to start doing is is the cutting and and filling in in the in the trails too as well to get that. I'm just going to bring it back up that I brought back up years ago and we start putting the trails in that that'll be another step where we're going to start having to spend money to maintain something that's already there. And if we wait too long to start doing the maintenance, then we'll have to start doing bigger patches or replacements in parts. So that's something that's got to be considered in the near future as well.
Well, that's all.
And it costs money, you know, and we don't have it, right?
And maybe when we put together, if we're, if if you guys decide to go forward with the public safety referendum where it includes public works, maybe that's, we put, we at least took the calculation in there and you guys can decide if you want to add it in or take it out because we have to have a number on there.
I just want to bring it up that I think we should, we got to take a look at it and and we got to get serious about this within the next few years as far as a a minor maintenance program if we want to keep the trails in intact. I mean, you guys drive, you know more than I know on them. I'm just looking visually and and I use some of them, but.
I ride them. You're you're right.
And and we know, we know, and and there's, I I believe there's got to be some grant money available, will you qualify? I don't know. But I would think there'd be some grant money available for maintaining trails. because a lot of them are connecting city to city now, right? And and that's a state thing that they want to do. And that's where your state assemblies and some like people like that come in handy for us that maybe we need to reach out to them.
There is money in the past budget, or this past budget for some, if that trails would qualify on an eighty percent reimbursement.
Does that new roof rails or repairing them or?
Uh, new trails. Um, however, it's part of the Knowles, whatever.
Yeah, that got, did they get taken out though?
And they get taken out, they just haven't funded it.
And there's a rating system for that.
Things in there, but they haven't put any money towards it and I'm not sure they're going to because they're kind of fighting right now on that. So it's, there's a lot of goofy things that happen.
But I just want to, I just want to voice my opinion on that because I know that's something that we gotta look at in the future and uh and I know it won't be free, so.
No, but I think what you said before with drones and the fact that we have G I S, I think I can work with Nick here and we have, we have all our trails mapped, so.
Right, right.
But let's, okay, to me, that's could be an assignment that I can start doing with Ryan. We start doing it and how we rate our roads. We can just, we can just do ours and we can rate ours and we can just use a similar system of zero to ten. We don't reinvent the wheel and just.
I mean, we know how many miles roll.
Oh, yeah, we get, we get just L N G S.
And say, hey, okay, for the next five years or ten years, we're gonna do this many miles so we touch.
We we could figure out something like that.
Whatever. Okay, fine. I just want to throw it out there.
No, no, that's fine. That's that's a a good project, um, something I, you know.
Costly one, but.
I'll start doing.
So if I'm, if I'm remembering this correctly and add or take away from this list, um, we're gonna have Barrett come in and talk about the impact of borrowing. Um, Scott and or Ryan or whoever else is going to come up with a rough estimate of what? Three, you know, two, three, four million dollars would do in borrowing for roads, you know, how much, how much you you would get done. You wanted the top seven worst roads? Okay. You know, if you take the seventh, seventh road, i- is the worst road in there, eight, eight miles long that it's gonna eat up, you know, something like that. So we have an idea on that. Any, anything else? All right. Any other questions on this? Comments? Do we all agree that we need to do something with the roads? Yeah, okay. All right. I have nothing else. Communications miscellaneous business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned at seven oh nine.